Welcome to a meeting of your planning commission, the official local planning agency for the cities of Tampa, Temple Terrace, Plant City, and unincorporated Hillsborough County. The Planning Commission provides innovative leadership and long-range vision that contributes to the creation of a thriving prosperous community that offers opportunity, fairness, and choice in how we live, move, learn, work, and play. For more information about the Planning Commission, please call 813-272-5940. Follow us on social media or visit our website at
All right, welcome to the November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three public hearing of the Planning Commission on City of Tampa Comprehensive Plan Amendments. We thank you for attending this meeting. Your comments and participation are encouraged. For those attending in person and wishing to speak on any agenda item, please sign the register at the rear of the room and turn off any devices that may be a distraction. To minimize feedback in the audio, all online participants in the meeting will be muted until it is their opportunity to speak. Planning commissioners should unmute themselves to indicate that they would like to speak. Please be sure to state your name at the beginning of your remarks for the benefit of the clerk. There will be an opportunity for members of the public to provide comments. When your name is called, you will be unmuted when it is your turn to speak. Please wait until the chair calls on you to begin speaking. State your name at the beginning of your comments and adhere to the time limits. If anyone has difficulties or is watching via HTV and would like to provide comments to be included in the record for local government hearing, please email them to planner@plancom.org. For those of you who are not familiar with our process, the meeting will be conducted as follows. The agenda item will be introduced. Staff will give their presentation with a fifteen-minute time limit. The applicant will be given the opportunity to make a presentation with a fifteen-minute time limit. Following presentations, members of the public may address the Planning Commission when recognized by the chairman. Public comment will be heard for three minutes per person. The applicant will be afforded a three-minute period for rebuttal response. Planning commissioners will then ask questions. Public comment will be closed. Then upon a motion, a second, and discussion, a vote will be taken. To all participants, please note that tonight's hearing concerns proposed changes to the comprehensive plan. Presentations should not include matters related to zoning applications and site plans that are not before the commission. Zoning conditions are not relevant to plan amendments and may not be considered by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission's purview in making a recommendation is limited to consistency or inconsistency with the comprehensive plan. With that, I'd like to please ask the clerk to call roll.
Good evening, Bowden.
Here.
Buzzer? Buzzer? Cardenas?
Here.
Fernandez?
Here.
Gress?
Here.
Loke?
Here.
Soria? Soria? Seaman?
Here.
Uh, Michelle Orton?
Lori Belangia for Michelle Orton.
Rodriguez?
Here.
And Joseph?
Here.
Thank you. You have a corn.
All right, with that, we'll jump right into it. Our first action item is two A, TACPA twenty-three dash eighteen Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment, northeast corner of East Fletcher Avenue and North Forty-sixth Street, and the presenter is Emily Phelan.
Emily Phelan, Planning Commission staff. This is TACPA twenty-three eighteen at the northeast corner of East Fletcher Avenue and North Forty-sixth Street. The request is privately initiated a regular-scale amendment approximately one hundred and thirty-eight point nine-five acres, and the request is to go from recreational open space and environmentally sensitive areas to public, semi-public, and environmentally sensitive areas. The subject site is located in the northeast corner of Hillsborough County. It's in the University Planning District in the Terrace Park neighborhood. This is an aerial of the subject site. It's outlined here in yellow, and it is the Claw at USF, the golf course. And this is East Fletcher Avenue, and to the south is the remainder of the University of South Florida's campus. To the west is primary, the west and the north is primarily multifamily residential with some commercial uses on the corner of North Forty-sixth Street and East Fletcher Avenue. This is the subject site looking south on North Forty-sixth Street. The subject site is on the left. This is facing the subject site, a different view of the subject site. This is looking north on North Forty-sixth Street. The subject site is on the right, and on the left you can see the multifamily uses. This is the adopted future land use map. The environmentally sensitive areas are in the far northeast corner of the subject site, and the remainder of the subject site is represented by the recreational open space designation. Directly to the west, represented by the residential twenty, is unincorporated Hillsborough County. To the south is the University of South Florida, represented by the public semi-public designation. And to the southeast, this is also unincorporated Hillsborough County, and then right here along this boundary is the city of Temple Terrace. This is the proposed future land use map. Again, the environmentally sensitive areas are in the northeast corner of the subject site, not changing. The remainder of the parcel is represented by the public semi-public designation. Under the existing future land use designations of recreational open space in environmentally sensitive areas, dwelling units are not permitted and non-residential uses are not permitted as well. Under the potential impacts of the site going to environmentally sensitive areas and the public semi-public designation, the environmentally sensitive areas, they are remaining environmentally sensitive. They are not permitted to have dwelling units or non-residential uses on the site. The public semi-public designation does not have a maximum of dwelling units, nor does it have a maximum of square feet of residential or non-residential uses. However, the, the uses must be associated with the public institution and must be compatible with the surrounding area development pattern. The Planning Commission staff reviewed the proposed plan amendment and found it consistent with multiple aspects of the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan recognizes the university district as a primary research, medical, and education employment center in the city, and seeks to ensure that schools are located in the city to serve the needs of the community. And additionally, the comprehensive plan promotes transit and, and employment centers. Planning Commission staff recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan. And this concludes my presentation.
Does the applicant have a presentation?
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Carol Post. I'm the vice president for Facilities and Public Safety Operations at the University of South Florida. I'm joined here today by colleagues from USF, including our senior associate general counsel, Hillary Black, who will join me in the presentation, as well as Dr. Eric Eisenberg, our senior vice president for US, for University and Community Partnerships. I also have members of our campus planning staff here, all of whom will be able to take any questions as needed. And the staff has done a very efficient job with putting the presentation together, so I just have a few complimentary comments to account for some more context to what we're doing and why now. So again, to reiterate, we are seeking a future land use change to make the former golf course site consistent with USF's main campus. So we're simply looking for alignment there. For those who may not know, some of the history and sort of why we're here now is that the public golf course dated back to the late sixties, the origins of the university. Since two thousand and ten, that course has only been a public golf course. It has not been used as the home course, if you will, for the men's and women's USF golf teams. And in fact, in the most recent years, it's actually been, an incredible amount of expenses resulted in operating the golf course, which is not really aligned with or serving USF's core mission in serving our student needs. We did look at restoring and making some investments into the golf course that would restore it to its original luster, if you will, and the, the expense for that was in the multimillion dollars. And again, we felt like the investment of that, the kind of expenditure should really be geared toward the support of the USF core mission and its students. So we opted in two thousand and twenty-three, earlier in two thousand and twenty-three, to close the course, close the public aspect of the course, and redirect those funds to support USF's mission. The course was closed on September fifth of two thousand and twenty-three. There was a fair amount of public outreach regarding that closure over the summer, and now the course is, is closed to the public use. I won't reiterate what staff shared with you. The parcel has been delineated from the forest preserve site. This hundred and thirty-eight acres is the area that we're seeking to change the future land use designation for. We are not seeking any amendment, any change, or any action related to the forest preserve located to the east. And as was stated, as you can see in the future land use map, and again, staff has reiterated this, that the large blue, public semi-public space at the base is the University of South Florida campus. We are already in that future land use designation. We're simply looking to modify and amend the parcel to the north so that it matches the rest of USF's campus. I won't go through these details. Again, you have this in front of you, and the, and the staff covered this item well. Did want to cover a couple of other notions about assuming and respectfully requesting the change here today. What would, what would this mean for us moving forward? Couple of items to note is that in the spirit of supporting our student athletes, we did retain the public, I'm sorry, the, the golf team's training complex that was on the site. That consists of a driving range, a chipping and putting green, and then that it is their locker rooms, their, their coach area, and student gathering areas. We also preserved holes four, five, and six of the golf course, which are being improved, again, to serve the men's and women's golf teams for the foreseeable future. That gives them a par three, a par four, and a par five course, and puts them on par, if you will, with some peer institutions in, in terms of serving our student athletes. What lies ahead for us is a very public process where we will prepare and then issue a public solicitation to see what the future of this parcel could be and what it should be relative to serving our, USF's needs, as well as being in harmony with the surrounding community. We do not have any prescribed plans. We don't have any preset notions. All that we do know is that any future use of that property would align with the four bulleted items you see here. First and foremost, it would align with USF's mission and its purpose. It would be in harmony with our strategic plan, which is in pursuit of the furtherance of our students, our faculty, our staff, and our alumni. We are very mindful of the need to have complementary and harmonious compatibility with the parcels in and around this site. And it is our notion to activate this space and have it be a vibrant space that really serves that community, much more so than just serving the university's needs, even though those would be paramount. I'm going to pause for a moment and invite my colleague to join for covering a few additional considerations that we think are important to note.
Good evening. Again, Hillary Black, counsel for the university. Thank you for having us here this evening. A few additional considerations I wanted to bring to everyone's attention. We did comply with the required public notice. In addition, our Office of Community Partnership reached out to other key stakeholders in the surrounding area. Again, it's important to us that this is a transparent process, and we include all of our community stakeholders in our current plans and future plans. Additionally, this land is actually state land held by the TIF. Overs, the oversight is through DEP and the Division of State Lands. We have the benefit of a master lease from the Division of State Lands from the state, and in that master lease, we have a restrictive covenant that any use on this land has to be in support of our public educational mission. So not only does that have guide rails for us that, frankly, we would work within anyway, but it's in black and white that we have those guide rails. But that also aligns with the request we have today for the public semi-public use. The land cannot be sold. It's state land. We intend to use it to benefit our educational mission as it was intended. And any future project that we identify will go through USF's very transparent, very rigorous approval process, which involves at least five different steps and ability for both the public and the USF community to comment and give their opinion. And lastly, our master plan must align, which if, depending on what project is identified, would require us to come back for discussion to local governing, governing bodies. Thank you.
Thanks, Hillary. So just to wrap up, and I think really emphasizing the notion of transparency and accountability to many, many stakeholders, we wanted to share with this group, the many steps that we know lie ahead of us. Some of those are regulated by the state and by our oversight organizations, but others are our internal systems that are, in some cases, required through our Board of Trustees, and in other cases, are just our intention to be very, very transparent about this across all of our stakeholders, students, faculty, staff, alumni, and as Hillary said, our neighbors across. As you've noted, we have a variety of jurisdictions that will be impacted by this, and we've already had communication with them. So again, just reflecting our, our request is to simply align this parcel, which is USF land, with the rest of the USF campus. The development that lies ahead of us would become a very public process, subject to very rigorous approval, and the future development must be in alignment and legally compliant in all the many ways that were stated today, and probably many more that were not even stated. And that is our intention to be very transparent, very diligent about it, and very accountable to our community. So I'll close there. I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. We had quite a few people sign up in the public comment for this one, so I will go ahead and start it off online to run through these, because I'm not sure they're all there, but we'll go through the list. So we'll start out with Jose Mori. And please remember, three minutes per person. Keep it within your time. Is Jose Mori on the line? Virtually?
Um, Mr. Chair, hold on. I just, we had a, a call-in user calling as the meeting started, so I didn't get to check them in. Uh, with the last two digits, one-one, can you please identify yourself?
Uh, hi. I think that might be me?
Yes, that is. Uh, can we ask who's speaking, please?
Yes. Uh, my name is Claire Crichton. I'm a student at USF.
Okay. I just wanted to, just to check you in first off. Uh, and then Jose did not check into the meeting.
All right. So next up, we have Andrew Rabalino.
Oh, Andrew did not.
Nope. It's false alarm. He's the next item. Oh, no, no. David Berg.
Yes, I will. David, go ahead.
Uh, yes. Hello, my name is David Berg, and I reside with my significant other, who owns a townhome across the street from the former USF golf course. I am speaking today to express my opposition to the proposed amendment in the future land use plan map that would rezone the USF golf course. This proposed amendment would open the possibility of USF developing the green space without community, students, or faculty input. This parcel is home to a countless number of native plants and wildlife, and is an essential corridor to the USF forest preserve, much of which is federally protected due to its rare floodplain wetland status. I propose, instead of proposing an amendment to explore developing the former golf course, we should be looking for ways to preserve this ecological buffer for the USF forest preserve. USF is already getting ready to bulldoze the nature trail located on the proposed site of the football team, a stadium, so why can't we use the, the nature trail be lo, relocated to the former USF golf course? The infrastructure is already there. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have in person, virtually, well, they're both, so I'm just gonna say Brenda Pelts. Is she on the line? Okay, we'll hang on until we're in person. You signed up for both. Um, I have, uh, Yin, Ying Lin. Oh, nope. They said they didn't want to talk. Cancel that one, too. Um, moving on to Stanford Row. Is Stanford Row on the line? Oh, no, Stanford Row's in person. All right. Okay, Will. Nope. Is Will Laurie one, too? No, I think that's.
I have Will.
No, but that's not for this item. That was for something else. Okay, go ahead. Go ahead, Will. Go ahead, Mr. Laurie.
Cheers. Uh, this is my first county meeting sort of thing. Uh, my name is Will Laurie. I'm a USF alum, um, avid birder, avid big fan of, uh, big fan of wildlife. Um, as I'm sure many alum feel the same way, we don't need this to be developed for anything other than just keeping in its purpose. Um, if, if the maintenance costs are too high, just let the wildlife reclaim it. Just my thoughts. Um, if you're gonna maintain it for a couple golf holes, um, just let wildlife take the rest. I feel like it's a bit simple. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Jeannie Munger. Is Jeannie Munger on the line?
Yes, I'm here.
Please go ahead.
Yes, I'm here. Okay. Uh, hi, my name is Dr. Jeannie Munger. I'm a plant biologist and alumnus of the Integrative Biology Department at USF. In two thousand and twenty-one, I helped organize a coalition of concerned students and community members who opposed USF's request for information to develop the forest preserve and the Claw golf course. Through our efforts, USF rescinded this RFI and recommitted to protecting the forest preserve by forming their ECore system. This forest preserve is now, has a dedicated land manager, and many new opportunities for education, research, and outreach have arisen from our public efforts to keep this space protected. Since that organizing began in two thousand and twenty-one, I have advocated for the preservation of the golf course as a green space for use by the USF student body and Tampa community. These one hundred and forty acres border the forest preserve, as well as Cypress Creek, and are flecked with numerous wetland habitats and contain known indigenous cultural heritage sites. This land also acts as a critical buffer zone, shielding the forest preserve from the negative impacts of increased urbanization around its border. It also acts as refugium for forest preserve wildlife, including numerous imperiled bird species, and as part of a greater wildlife corridor that links Cypress Creek Preserve to the Lower Hillsborough Conservation Areas. This wildlife corridor ultimately stretches across the state of Florida, and protection for it has received by partisan support from state legislators. This golf course land is an integral part of that corridor. I urge the Planning Commission to remain true to the vision stated within the future land use plan map of the Tampa Comprehensive Plan, and I stand in opposition to this request to rezone that property at the northwest corner of Fletcher Avenue. Development of this property is not aligned with the city of Tampa's resilient Tampa roadmap, which states that the city has obligations to remedy the unplanned growth that has occurred around the USF area to date, to protect the health of the Tampa Bay watershed, to protect and preserve existing natural systems, and to preserve and increase a sustainable tree canopy and urban forest that maximizes air quality, energy savings, carbon sequestration, and other ecosystem services. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Calista. Just one name. Is Calista on the line?
Uh, yes, I'm here.
Please go ahead.
Uh, okay. Hi, uh, my name is Calista Snyder. I live right near Temple Terrace, and I'm a USF alumnus. I'd like to comment my opposition of the proposed amendment in the future land use plan map that would rezone USF's golf course, known as the Claw. Um, this proposed amendment, um, USF has not conferred with the community, students, faculty, or alumni for their input, and I, again, would like to oppose this. This issue is important to me because I graduated from USF with my degree in integrative animal biology, and in my program, we very often use many of the green spaces on campus for our studies and classes and labs. Although the Claw was a, I believe, a functioning golf course while I myself was in school, now that it has foregone that purpose, this is a great opportunity for specifically the biology department and also environmental sciences department to allow the students to see a wetlands ecology, as well as an ecological buffer space in action right on campus. A buffer space between the forest preserve and the rest of the residential and city area is crucial to the well-being of both animals and humans alike, as it would limit the human and animal interaction in the city areas, as well as gives, give these animals and wildlife a larger area in which to find shelter away from human activity. The learning opportunities here are endless, and this is not even to mention the recreational purposes and the just joy of a beautiful green space, another one. Um, furthermore, this space is home to, I believe, seventy-three species of birds and numerous other wildlife species, all which would be displaced, and many of these species are protected under state and federal law as a threatened species. I urge this committee and USF itself to take this opportunity and use it for good. In my courses, we learned about land conservation and its benefits to humans and animals alike. Let's put that talking to action. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Cam Morin. Is Cam Morin on the line?
Hi there. Uh, yeah, Cam. I live in the USF area, and I just wanted to say that I think there are better ways for this land to be used than possible redevelopment. So I'm, in my understanding, I learned some stuff listening to the proposal, but whatever the case may be, I think the most important use for this land will be to maintain it as a symbol and, you know, actual place for wildlife to be able to travel down the corridor, protecting the USF lands as a buffer region. Also, if we open it up to more development, that can very easily cause more flooding in the area, because when we get rid of the local trees and local wildlife and flora, that makes groundwater much more easily accessible, just causes more flooding, which can pose a problem to the surrounding area. It also, if development can continue, gets rid of canopy cover, which contributes to your urban heating. Um, the, the list goes on and on. There's a ton of protected birds, just, and local wildlife in general, that use the ground. So if it's at all possible to find other ways to use the land than further development, I think the argument that, um, the land has to be developed more to align with USF's purposes isn't totally true. There are definitely things that can be done with the land as it is, um, to benefit USF students, to benefit the community at large, to benefit alumni. Um, so I just, I don't think that the, there's a need to rezone it in the future planning map. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, virtually, we have Christopher Carlson. Is Christopher Carlson on the line?
Uh, Christopher did not check in.
All right. And last, virtually, we have Sherri Thomas. Oh, who didn't want to talk, so cancel that one. All right, that's all we had sign up in our virtual.
I did have, Mr. Chair, I apologize to interrupt you, but we did have an Alex Kirk sign in, too. Um, I'm not sure if you wanted to speak to this item.
Yeah, thank you. My name is Alex Kirk. I'm a graduate student in integrated biology. Um, I think, I think some of the major points have already really been hit home, but to take kind of a, a practical approach to this, anybody who's kind of working on this project that's in, in facilities, maybe take a, take a stroll along the south end of the for, forest preserve, and then take a stroll along the west end of it. You'll notice the difference in when there's an ecological buffer like the Claw. Uh, compare kind of the amount of trash that's in the west end of the forest preserve, compare the amount of noise that you hear from traffic. Um, there's, there's much more of that, um, audio pollution. There's much more just pollution and trash along the south end. There's much more roadkill along the road there. Um, the, the effect of the, that, that transitional zone, that ecological buffer is incredible when you, when you can really walk along that and see that. So I urge the people who are, who are thinking about developing this area to just take a walk along the south and west sides and compare that difference and see what that, uh, what that buffer zone does. Um, again, I want to thank everybody else who called on here because they, they hit some really good points that I'm not going to reiterate, but um, that, that, that concept of the ecological buffer is powerful, and I, I just urge you again to, to investigate that. And, um, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's all we had virtually, and now we will go to our in-person signups, and we'll start off with Brenda Pelts. Oh, you have to come up to the mic. Yeah.
I live right across the street.
Say your name.
Oh, my name is Brenda Pelts, and I live right across the street from the US golf course at the Vucare Condominium Complex. And I feel the same way as everybody else that has been speaking, that I feel there's a lot of wildlife there. You get up in the morning, and you go for a walk. There's a lot of deer. We've seen alligators, raccoons, and it would be, they would all be displaced, and it would be a big pity to let that go. Um, also, I feel that. Um, also, I feel that they don't know, if you rezone it, they don't know what they're going to be making of it. And that area is so densely populated already with apartment blocks, student housing, and the traffic is just awful. So in addition to displacing the wildlife, I feel that, um, if they don't know what they want to do with it and you rezone it, it can just be open to anything. That's all I have to say. So I, I oppose it.
Thank you. All right. Next up, in person, we have Stanford Rowe. Mr. Rowe.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of, well, I'm general counsel for the Oaks Condominium Association, or Community Association, which is comprised of eight separate, uh, condominium associations, which is directly across the street of 46th, uh, that abuts, uh, the old Claw site. Um, here just to voice the association's concerns. The association isn't necessarily opposed, uh, or for the plan, but the concerns would be the traffic, um, already, uh, the traffic already backs up to the association's entrance. Um, every morning, uh, we have also water drainage, uh, concerns, um, potential flooding. Uh, there's already, uh, runoff from the golf course, um, and obviously taking away that green space. And, uh, putting concrete on said green space could only exacerbate that, uh, current flooding, not flooding, I wouldn't call it flooding, but runoff as it is. Um, and then as, has also been, um, expressed here tonight already, uh, we don't know what the future use is going to be, whether it be a football parking lot, student housing, um, what have you. The association has further concerns of safety and cleanliness as far as, uh, either people traversing over the association's property or litter, um, that is going to, uh, come from this new future use. Um, as far as the ecological buffer goes, this is on a personal note. Um, I personally play golf at the Claw about 50 times, and every time you're out there, you're going to see, uh, wildlife, whether that be alligators, turkeys, um, and what have you, so.
Thank you. All right. Continuing on our in-person bent, I have a Carlos de la Guardia. If he wanted to speak. No, maybe not. All right. And then we will continue on with David Coleman.
Hi, my name is Dave Coleman, and, um, transparency, um, I, I didn't know, and it was just mentioned, what are they going to build? It said in her presentation, it said, uh, maximum existing is that, um, dwelling units are not permitted, and haven't been permitted forever. Um, and now the potential is for maximum dwelling units not defined, but it says the request has the potential to introduce residential and commercial uses affiliated with a public or semi-public use. Um, this meeting comes, um, nine days after I attended, um, at the CAM at USF, where Indigenous peoples, um, Betty Osiola, Robert Rosa, and Reverend Houston Cypress were invited to this event to speak with an anthropologist on a forum, and it's recorded. You can look it up and you can see it. Um, at the end was a Q and A. And, um, I specifically, I, I caught, hey, this is an opportunity for me to ask somebody who's currently there, the anthropologist, um, Thomas Pluckin, um, what is happening with the USF Forest Preserve? We had arranged for 24,000 speakers, um, signers, um, to, to stand against development in that area, and, and it included the Claw, but specifically it was the USF Forest Preserve, as she was saying. But, um, development close to it, as everybody is telling you, is going to endanger Indigenous mound, which has been robbed already and can be robbed again in the future, especially if more growth infiltrates into the area. I should just start reading from this, because I'm going to run out of time. I, I'm not going to be able to read out of it. I find it highly insulting that the anthropologist minimized what was said, said, oh, if we put anything there, it would be a small building, and that might deter any more robbers from going in there. Um, and nine days later, outcomes this, and we're being told complete transparency across the board. USF, USF, this is what I think of the CAM. This is what Robert Rosa, the leader of AM, AIM in Florida, told me to do with the CAM presentation and his invitation, and Betty Osiola's invitation, and the Reverend's invitation. You people need to go look and walk like somebody just suggested? Um, we need actual transparency. We need time for public input. We need a moment for those 24,000 people to come back and talk to this, to this county. And also, really quick, I got to say that the county goal in South County, in East County, is absolutely to protect the environment. Um, that's been repeated over and over and over in the future use, use plan. So what about the urban service area? Are we completely neglected? You need to take the exact same rules, this board, that you do for East and South County, for the GOP in our county commission, and, and, and apply it to the urban service corp. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Next up, we have D O B Z H Laurent? Is, yes, please go ahead.
My name is Dobzinski Laurent. I am a resident, and I joined the boards for the Oak Condominiums. I'm absolutely opposed to this. Um, two reasons. First reason, aesthetically, when I wake up in the morning, sometimes three o'clock in the morning, I see deer. Okay, I see wild, wild turkey. I see wild boar on the USF, um, Claw, okay? Um, when it rains, um, when it rains heavy, it floods, okay? But you have 138 acres of water-absorbing trees and grass that's going to be razed. Make, make, make no mistake about this. This is, this has everything to do with the stadium that's going to be built on 50th. Okay, to me, this is going to be the tailgating parking lot for the USF stadium, which if they lay down concrete, is going to cause a flooding, and it's going to change my quality of life and living. You know, I'm here to think, um, to make a decision whether or not, am I going to sell this place, or am I going to stay? Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Casey Beaver. Baver, Bever. I'm sorry, I'm butchering it.
It's all good. My name is Casey Bauer, Mahillsboro County resident. I'm speaking today to express my opposition to the proposed amendment in the future land use plan map that would rezone the golf course on USF campus, better known as the Claw. The proposed amendment would open up the possibility of USF developing over vital green space without adequate community input. This is an issue that's important to me based on all the trends that Plan Hillsborough and others release. Population trends are continuing to rise, and we don't have unlimited use of green space. Um, it is vital that this area stay, um, undeveloped to protect the USF preserve. Any future development could impact water quality, increase, uh, noise and light pollution. Uh, the land known as the Claw supports adjacent wildlife, and I really express, uh, my strong opposition to this development. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have Hillary Black.
Sir, I'm with USF.
Oh, sorry. Um, Carol Post with USF. Thomas Reinhardt.
Thank you. My, my name is Thomas Reinhardt. I own, uh, a unit at the University Medical Park directly across the street on 46th Street from the Claw. And I, I had a couple of questions that I wanted to ask, uh, rather than statements. Um, I'd, I'd like to know from the USF presenters.
Sir, this isn't question and answer. You have to make your statements and move on. They're not gonna, we don't have time for them to be back and forth with question and answer, so.
Well, I, I just very quickly, um, I just wanted to relay one, uh, event that happened to me. Several years ago, I was working at my office early in the morning, and probably about 6:30 in the morning, I looked out the window and I saw six wild turkeys strutting up the, uh, driveway toward 46th Street, and they walked across the, uh, golf course, and it was a very beautiful sight. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have David Wright. Oh, no, it's too B, too A. Cam Pressi.
Thank you. My name is Cam Pressi. Uh, I am a Tampa resident. Um, I'm appearing here today to stand in, stand in strong opposition to this amendment change. I will try not to repeat all the great points that were made by, um, everyone else that already spoke. Um, rather, I would like to push back on some of the claims made by the honorable counsel behind me. Um, they claim that this was consistent with the USF campus. I think it is evident, you know, I'm confused what that consistency means. Uh, we talked about ecological buffers already. Um, the USF Forest Preserve is also part of this campus. This ecological buffer is a consistent, um, important transitional habitat, um, that protects the preserve and also protects the development outside it. I also want to push back against the claim that preserving this green space is against the USF core mission statement. I've read the mission statement, and in that mission statement, it also mentions, uh, the values of social, economic, and environmental sustainability. This is a listed value, as well as research and scientific discovery to strengthen the economy, promote civic, cultural, and the arts, and design and build sustainable communities through the generation, dissemination, and translation of new knowledge across all academic and health-related disciplines. So I really don't see how maintaining this green space, which is a sustainable endeavor, is against the student mission statement. Um, I also want to push back against the claim that this was a transparent process and that the USF council is engaging in a transparent, uh, good faith argument. The reason being is I don't believe one single public notice, um, that was given out, you know, perhaps a week or two before this meeting is sufficient. Um, my understanding is not everyone on this campus, USF, uh, had the knowledge that this meeting was coming up, as well as the fact that there are a lot of commuters on the USF campus. So if people don't live directly in the area, they might not have received this notice. Um, I also want to, uh, mention all of the, the bird species, you know, so we had 70, 73, uh, bird species that we talked about, and there was a claim by the council that this was necessary, this development, or rather, this amendment change in preparation for the development is necessary to activate and revitalize the parcel. I think all the comments made today have shown that this is already a very active environmental area. Um, so like I said, 73 bird species, and since I have, um, 40 more seconds, I'll go down a few of those species, and these are all recorded by one, uh, one scientist working with Tampa, Florida, or Tampa Audubon, excuse me. So we have the black-bellied whistling duck. We have the muscovy duck, of course. We have the wood duck. We have blue-winged teal, common ground dove, mourning dove, common night hawk, chimney swift, a swift-tailed kite, ruby-throated hummingbird, common gallinule, limpkin, sandhill crane, killdeer, laughing gull, wood stork, anhinga, double-crested cormorant, yellow-crowned night heron, little blue heron. So as you can see, I got through maybe 15 or 20 of those. I have a, quite a long list, uh, already. This is a really biodiverse area, is necessary to protect.
Thank you. All right. Next up, we have, last up, we have Julie Baker.
Thank you. My statement. I'm Julie Baker. I'm a resident of Tampa and USF alum. I'm asking you to not change the zoning, because I fear that it would lead to development of the USF golf course, and we need to preserve the environment. Uh, it's essentially a wetland, uh, prone to flooding, and ideally, it would be restored to protect the wildlife that relies on that land. I'd like to advocate for the land to become part of the preserve, which is why the amendment should be denied, so community members have a, a seat at the table making decisions in the, in the community. Additionally, I'm a mental health therapist, and access to green space correlates with reduced depression and anxiety, which can support the well-being of USF students as is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That is all for the public comment that people signed up for, so now I will give the applicant a opportunity to rebut, respond.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Um, first, I'd like to say I, we do appreciate everyone's thoughts and input. I think you, you know, we're recording furiously, uh, and I'll speak more about that before closing, but the input is very helpful. This is the beginning of this process, which will be a very lengthy one. Um, and we invite input, feedback, questions, and answers throughout. Um, all of that, uh, lies ahead of us. That commitment to transparency is in fact sincere, it's genuine, and there will be many opportunities for all the stakeholders who've spoken, uh, to have a, an opportunity for a more, a deeper understanding of what's happening and for them to convey their input. The second thing that I think is probably as important, if not more, is to emphasize that the forest preserve will not be impacted by this. USF is emphatically committed to maintaining the forest preserve and all of the ecologically sensitive areas that buffer it. Whatever development will occur on this space, presuming that that occurs, um, will also have to comply with concurrency requirements, all of the concerns related to transportation, any sort of stormwater runoff, all of those things, um, and the preservation of a, of a sufficient barrier between the space that we're articulating and that forest preserve. I can't emphasize that enough, our commitment to, uh, the maintenance of the forest preserve. I do want to mention as well, the, um, the potential uses. Some people have mentioned things like walking trails and more passive uses. We do think that there is an opportunity for that in this space. Um, and also, the Forest Preserve Committee, there was a member of that committee that spoke. That committee had a very, um, important role. They brought a, a great deal of influence to what happened at the, um, uh, two years ago, when there was, uh, discussion about the use of this, uh, parcel at that time. I believe that group and their voice will continue to influence the outcome of the project that lies ahead. And, and again, just to conclude, um, uh, my response is that this is and will be a transparent process. We welcome folks, uh, along the way at any of the forums, of which there will be many that lie ahead of us. But I would also welcome them even today, uh, to reach out to us. We are happy to engage with any of the community groups, with any neighborhood groups, with any of the developments that are uh, adjacent to us. We will come to them. We will go to their forums. Um, or if someone has an individual question, we were, are happy to respond to those. We'll make ourselves available um, and have points of contact for people to connect with. Um, I'm not sure, Hillary, if you have anything you'd like to add? Okay. Um, thank you again. We appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. All right. With that, it is to my commissioners for comments, questions, discussions on this item. Yes, Commissioner Seaman.
Um, I have a question that I think might be a little bit more for staff. Um, on the report, it says that 1.01 acres of the 137.94 acres are environmentally sensitive, which would come out to 0.7%. But on the report and in the aerial, it's looking like there's a you know, relatively significant portion of the site that's actually, um, wetlands, so I'm just a little bit confused about the acreage there. So, um, the applicant, since they are only changing a portion of the parcel, they provided their GIS shapefile of the portion based off their survey of what they were changing, and the environmentally sensitive area, that's the only acreage that was in their survey as far as the wetland. That would be, if there are wetlands, that would be a determination from the environmental protection, and they would have to get that survey for that to be delineated. I understand that. I guess my question's more related to the map that I'm looking at. Has portions cut out of it that look to be substantially larger than 0.7% of the site?
So to, to clarify, the environmentally sensitive areas land use category, if you're looking at the map that, um, the existing future land use map, is the, hmm, I guess it's lighter green color that shows up just in the northeast corner of the property.
Oh, I see.
The actual, the blue spots are water bodies or wetlands? And they're not a different land use category?
I see. Okay, that's where my confusion was.
So not all wetlands are necessarily in the environmentally sensitive land.
I think.
Yeah. They're all very close. Yeah, thanks.
All right. Commissioner Fernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I first want to disclose that I am employed by the University of South Florida. I teach in their urban planning department. Can I ask staff for the flood map, please? Okay. So that's a 2008 FEMA flood map, uh, an AE zone, the blue shade there. Um, I also, uh, oh, is that on? Oh, sorry.
Can I point out where the site is before you continue?
Sure. Oh, yeah, sure. I'm sorry.
The subject site is approximately here.
Yes. Perfect. So the shaded area, uh, you can see the holes on the, to the right there. That's all a flood zone. Um, and I think that there's sort of an opportunity here. Um, and I, this is important to me, too. I did live at the Oaks for nine years. Um, I lived right across the street, walked my dog there when people weren't golfing. I totally understand the community's concern there. Um, and so I think, you know, as an, as a planner, there's an opportunity here to save not only that flood area, which is 61.9 acres, but that flood map needs to be updated, and there's going to be in some impervious surface probably built somewhere. So we can probably compromise on half the lot where we let some of the forest grow in closer to the preserve. in closer to the preserve, addressing a lot of our concerns about that part, and then look at other areas that the university can use. I mean, the university's going into the community now, this is a panhandle, right? The surrounding areas of the university are all sidewalk with storm drains, and I think that this is an opportunity to perhaps put a park along 46, expand the road, and compromise for the use. There's, a lot is going to go on here, but I do think there's a lot of opportunity.
Thank you. Commissioner Law.
Quick follow-up question to that. The application says there's 138.95 acres in the application, however, on the Elmo, you showed a lesser area. So I'm a little confused. What exactly is the ask? Is the flood area carved out?
Thank you. Sorry. I had a little bit of a technical difficulty with the map. I tried multiple times to get a larger area to have the entire site encompassed on this map, and it was not cooperating. It does encompass the vast majority of the site, there is just a little bit of the site to the south and the north that was cut off in this map. But the flood zones are the same throughout as well. I just couldn't get it larger. I apologize.
I think his question is, and I guess my question now, too, is, are the flood zones included in this portion of the site, or are they not?
Some of it is, right?
Some of it is, yeah. Part of it is in AE and part of it is in X, so part of it does come into AE, I just don't know how much of that, so I can't lay the parcels over it.
Commissioner Fernandez.
61.9 acres. Is that how much of the flood acre at the current mapping extent? I did get the parcel and did that analysis, and yet, that's not Emily's fault, the website disappears once you zoom out a bit, so we'll have to, we'll get another layer in there for these larger sites. But, and this flood area also includes some of those ponds to the north that we cannot see.
So is the ask exclusive of that flooding area, I guess?
Uh, that's, I mean, this goes by the, by the land use designation polygon area, and that includes both, non-flooded areas and areas that could flood.
So would, I guess, would USF be willing to, you know, be flexible on some sort of buffer here?
I don't think we can, that's not going to be answered here or part of this board.
Yeah, that's not before us. What's before us is what's before us, and unlimited raise in land development going forward.
I'm giving my opinions based off of being a resident of the area for nine years, working there, understanding the community, and then university's needs, you know, trying to, so that's all my opinion.
Sure.
But I can give you stats on acreage if we need them.
Commissioner Lock, you look fidgety.
I have a question for the applicant. So it was mentioned in the presentation that there aren't currently any plans for that parcel, and there is an openness to a dialogue with the community, all the stakeholders in the process. And so it's a pretty substantial change that we're asking for from adapted future land use, which specifies essentially green space and golf courses to things that include up to airports. And so if we're not sure as a developer and owner what you want to do with that parcel, can you talk to us a little bit about why now? Why are you bringing this forward before you have a plan for the parcel and you're able to engage with the community?
Well, I'll give you one ans, I'll give you an answer, and then I, I would invite Hillary to add to that context. But the why now is that, as I gave you a bit of the history of what brought us to this point, the land is now vacant, and the belief is that the university wants to engage it to ensure that it is fulfilling the highest and best use for the university's needs. We don't know exactly what that is or what that will be, and that is what our next steps will ensue, and our future state of engaging all stakeholders to understand student housing is something that's a need around the university area, but it may also serve other areas. One of the things I, I think might be of an interest is some of the notions where we're inviting the community onto campus for different uses, so that the university is not contained just unto itself, but that its uses can be matters that serve the community. Someone mentioned the walking trail. These things are not exclusive to university, to students or faculty, but whatever's done is intended to really engage the community and make this space something that can be, that can be appealing and attractive and be a, a way that the community can benefit from. In addition, and just to note, note the discussion about the ecological buffer area, as we've stated before, any of the requirements that will exist from environmentally sensitive lands, ecological buffer, stormwater runoff, all of those things will have to be respected. It certainly, that will be part and parcel of this exercise. I'll, I'll add, I'll ask Hillary to just add one additional response related to, we can't do, and I know you were saying that facetiously, but an airport is not consistent with USF's mission or purpose. I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we will be required to serve underlying university needs, so it is not, if you read through that list, not everything there would qualify.
I guess my overarching point on that is if the USF decided that wanted to open up an airport and a flight school, which other universities do, when we move this under, when we move the land use designation, all those options are open. Some of them require public input, some of them do not. So I'm reluctant in looking at this application where we are in the process with what I'm hearing from the community and the level of engagement that's been done. That's my overall point. I wasn't being facetious. Yeah.
Fair.
And I appreciate the comment, and again, I think what Carol was referring to is the restrictive covenant we have on the land. You know, if you want to use that actual hypothetical, for us to open up a school like that would take years of heading to an accrediting body, that would be, have to be in the community for quite some time, and, and is a process that would have to go in front of our board, which also invites public comment, and would need seven levels of public approval within the university. And so that's not something we could announce tomorrow and put on this site, that would be something that would have to have a large amount of community outreach engagement. It is, again, just to be clear, so it doesn't leave this room with something that is a possibility, it is not on any plans or radar, so just make sure that everyone knows that's not what our intention is for the site, of course. The restrictive covenant requires that it is something that is, to be used in support of our students, faculty, staff, research, educational mission. And, and that is a pretty large guardrail, and we have to submit any type of use to the state for them to approve. And, and so there, that really does mean we can't do a purely commercial, purely, we can't sell the land, we can't invite anyone in to do any type of revenue generating commercial enterprise there. It has to be in support of our public mission because it is public land. The other thing I would answer to you is that our, our process is going to be a very extensive process of having a public solicitation to ask for input on what we would do on, on that land. We won't get responses if the only use is open space. The, any, any consultant, private entity, any developer we might partner with to figure out what the best use would be, won't put money into their submissions if we don't have the ability to go forward with their dream. And that's really why we're here today. We want to hear what creative uses could be something that would support our students, could be what our students are looking for on this property, what our faculty, what our staff and community are looking for, and we want to be able to get that input.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Kress.
Thanks for everybody who spoke. I just want to remind them that our role here is to determine whether this is consistent with a comprehensive plan, it's not. People come all the time complaining about traffic, or, you know, we can't, we can't make decisions based on something, we create more traffic, or even, we like nature and birds. But with that being said, this reminds me a little bit of the forest preserve reaction. It felt to me that USF put out a plan without really getting a lot of input first, and then there was strong public opposition to that, and USF did the right thing, and they committed to preserving it. I see a lot of vacant land around the campus and on the campus, and it just makes me wonder if, if this gets approved today, I feel like it's more of a, not an if, but a when. So I guess it's my opinion that there'd be more public input at the front end. I believe I heard you say it was over the summer, when a lot of students probably aren't there. So I would like to see USF give more input on what should happen to the land, including leaving it as open space, and just see what the appetite is. I think open space certainly has a key role and could be a huge asset for USF if it's thought of differently. So that's where I stand today.
Thank you. Commissioner Kress. Are there any other comments from the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Fernandez.
Sorry, I think, Mr. Chairman, I forgot earlier. I'm a little curious why they're saving three holes, I'm assuming it's for practice, but to back up some of the public, there are Native American and other cultural resources right on hole three. So I'm just a little curious why, if you're not playing golf there regularly or practicing, why we have to preserve three holes, which I'm assuming is still going to need to be fertilized mode, loud, you know, noise pollution, those kinds of effects.
If I may, yes. The idea was that they're, they are there now, and it would be beneficial to the student athletes. We don't know what the long-term future would be of it, and you've raised a number of additional matters, all of which would have to be explored, so I think while we're, there would be an opportunity to make substantial changes even in its current future land use. We wanted to keep it as fallow as possible to just maintain its intended use for our student athletes until we had a better plan for what the future would be for it.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other comments? I just want to remind everyone that if we're going to go against staff's consistency finding, we're definitely going to need some policies and goals, so hopefully somebody in the staff has been working on that and might have some information for us, or anyone who might want to make a motion, we're not there yet, but we'll go on with the discussion. Commissioner Cardenas.
Yeah, it just, it just seems like it's, there's just not a lot of info, it seems very early on, and I can understand the need to want to bring a partner in on it, but, you know, if you're trying to serve your students, you'd think you'd want to go to them first before you find a profitable entity to bring into it somehow. It's a thought.
Well said, Commissioner Cardenas. Commissioner Bowden.
A question to the applicant is, we've heard a lot of comments from the, from the public, from the residents, and you're talking about you're going to do additional outreach. Now, if that outreach happens and everyone, you know, thousands of people said, let's leave it as is, would you do that?
Well...
It's more of a rhetorical question.
It, it is. I, I think there are a range of leaders and stakeholders that would be able to make that decision, but I think there's genuine interest to understand what people's needs are and what the stakeholders' interests are for that. I obviously can't answer the question, and I can't commit to what we would or wouldn't do, but I think there is an open mind to how best to use the space. I do think that the notion of recognizing its proximity to the forest preserve opens a range of opportunities to envelop that and to embrace that, and, you know, an idea of, we heard again, nature trails, a water, you know, resource of some sort, those are things that in very, you know, just in preliminarily thinking about it, makes sense. There is going to have to be a buffer, it's demanded just by some of the stormwater requirements. So I think that there's ways to optimize that and to really make this space harmonious with what it runs up to, which is dense housing and a very busy corridor. We're talking about Fletcher Avenue, there's high-rise hospitals, there, you know, it's a very dense corridor, serving a lot of community needs, and then the other side of it is a forest preserve. So how do you, how do you, how do you lay out uses across that that have a variation that's sufficient from an urban planning perspective that can grade from a dense, useful purpose to a less dense and more passive use? And the parcel's large enough that I think you can have a creative vision for it. Part of why we're here in front of you today is for that reason, to go to the public, semi-public use opens the door for us to explore a wide range of uses. If we leave it as it is, we have no, very few options. But the public, semi-public, if, if you are, many of you are quite familiar with the campus, if you walk around the campus, it has a range of uses from very low passive, we have running trails, we have a beach area, we have a green spa, excuse me, a green spine, we have, excuse me, we have a lot of ecologically connected aspects that run right up to the Morsani Clinic. There's a Publix that frankly serves a great number of our community that now have, you know, what had been a food desert, now has a wonderful asset that's available to them. And, you know, the list goes on and on. We also have academic spaces, but in and amongst all those academic spaces are all of these other vital uses that serve that North Tampa area and that Fletcher Fowler area, as well as our neighbors in Temple Terrace and beyond. The public, semi-public, future land use designation allows a wide range of vision. The rec, open space, does not.
Well, just, just thinking, as you were talking about, the, the, being an urban area and the green space, maybe, I came to mind with Central Park, in a busy area where there is this green space.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments from the commissioners? From my part, I need to claim my conflict of interest, like Commissioner Fernandez. I'm also employed by the university environmental science department. As a matter of fact, I teach environmental regulation in the Springs, so I know a couple things about this, and I actually grew up in this area, learned to ride bike on USF campus before I got gated in, played many a game of golf on the golf course, and seen many a wild animal out there. But it's been well said by everybody in here, so I don't have anything more to add to the beat-down that's been given in already, so I will just say that and give my form to the clerk and see if anyone has anything else to say about this. Commissioner Fernandez.
Yeah, I'll be submitting my form to, to the clerk. Thank you.
Any other, yes, Commissioner Cardenas.
Yeah, I think I just kind of also want to clarify, I, I think really what it is, is the fear of the unknown, and that's the opposition you're getting. You know, I went to a university that has beautiful green space, you know, as a student, we loved walking around campus, it was really well-developed, and I've recently gone back and they, I mean, we've got many skyscrapers there, but it's still very green at the same time. So I think that if you guys can present something that just provides a little bit more of a vision and a direction where people aren't thinking of a parking lot, and they're not thinking of, you know, that, I think the, the, I think it'll be a very different response.
Thank you. Any more comments or discussion items from the commissioners? Everybody seems pretty worn out at this point. All right, going once, going twice, and I will close the public comment on this item and open it up to the commissioners for motions on this item. Don't everybody jump at once. Anyone? Commissioner Kress.
You had asked staff to maybe suggest a couple policies. I don't know if anyone is prepared to do that, but I'm positive there's several that could be cited.
Our executive director.
Yes. Of course, my computer went dead, just as you asked that, but I wrote down a few, thankfully, before that. Land use objective 4.1, environmental objective 1.2, policies 1.2.1, 1.2.4, 1.2.12, and then I also was writing down environmental objective 1.4 and 1.4.2, and if I can make it turn back on, I can tell you what those all mean, but...
He's done.
Maybe Jennifer, Emily has the plan up, I don't, I don't...
They're coming up.
Jennifer Mull, Planning Commission staff. I'll pull my plan up, if you just bear with me.
Thank you, Commissioner Kress, for, okay. Land use objective 4.1 talks about providing governmental services, institutional, educational, cultural, and social facilities that are located and designed to complement Tampa's neighborhood centers and corridors. So the issue perhaps being the complementary nature of this to, is what I'm hearing. Just a second, just scroll to the environment. to scroll to the environmental policies.
Yeah, well, she's scrolling. I guess where I land, I think, is similar to Commissioner Cardenas. It just feels like cart is in front of the horse on this one, and it just, it just reminds me too much of the, of the forest preserve. I just, I feel like if this goes through today, there might just be a big student backlash, and it's going to be a PR nightmare for USF. So I would really suggest that there be more public input from students in the community before we open it up to, not that I think it'll be an airport, but to airports.
Are we allowed to respond?
No.
I'm, I'm, oh.
Jennifer Malone, Planning Commission Staff. I just, Melissa Z, I just wanted to let you know, we would need a policy to go with that objective under 4.1, and we, David Haye, Emily Phelan, and I don't see one that would necessarily fit on a brief review of, of the policies under that objective. And that was from City Attorney's Office.
Okay.
Was that with respect to the environmental policy?
No, that was respect to the one about the complementary nature of the uses. Okay, so the environmental objective 1.2 talks about ensuring to review all land development applications, protect the attributes, functions, and amenities of the natural environment. The related policies, 1.2.1, environmentally sensitive areas shall be protected. 1.2.4, through the land planning and development review process, require the provision of wildlife corridors, restrict the fragmentation of large natural plant communities that provide significant wildlife habitat. 1.212 talks about continuing to require the conservation and protection of existing native vegetation in new development projects. And then 1.4 talks, the, and I may need staff's help on this because the objective talks about lands annexed into the city of Tampa, but then the, the policies are much broader than that. So I don't know if you've, if one, if 1.4 of the environmental section would apply?
I'm scrolling really fast.
Okay. It's just the, the policies that are under it are much broader, talking about clustering and, and open space preservation, but the objective speaks to areas annexed by the city of Tampa. So I don't know if that...
That was related to the new Tampa developments.
Okay, so it would not apply to this area?
Correct.
Okay. All right. So the strongest ones that we've been able to find on the fly are 1.2, 1.2.1, 1.2.4, and 1.2.12.
And Jennifer Malone, Planning Commission Staff, I believe that there's a request from the applicant to possibly, so if they would be allowed to approach the podium and make a request, Chairman?
We're in the middle of a motion. A request for what? What's...
I think they want to respond to that comment I made, and I'm okay with that.
Public comments closed.
No, actually, it's not.
I closed public comment.
We're, we are listening to you. We're hearing what you say. We're requesting a continuance so we can come back and bring you further information. We'll come back when we have identified more for this parcel.
I had a motion on the floor, a half motion being made by Commissioner Kress.
Okay, understand. We just wanted to help and show that we are listening.
Well, I don't know if I need to make a motion for a continuance, but I think that would be fine.
That is an option, that the Planning Commission can make a motion to continue it to a future cycle when USF is ready to come back.
Do you have a comment?
I was just going to point out, there hasn't not been a second made, so the motion could be changed at any time.
Yeah. Yeah, I didn't actually, I don't feel like I made a motion before, so I, I will make a motion right now, though, that I think we should accept the continuance and with more, you know, public comment and come back at whatever time you deem necessary. That's fine with me.
Second?
All right, we have a motion to continue to whenever they feel like.
They, they will have, no, they'll have...
That's what she said. I mean...
Yes, but they will have to, just to be clear, they will have to, at the point that they're ready to come back, renotice for the public hearing, just like they did tonight.
Okay. All right. And a second to that motion by Commissioner Steven. All right. Any more discussion from the commissioners? Remembering that me and Commissioner Fernandez are not voting on this one, right?
Jennifer Malone, Planning Commission Staff, I apologize. Can the motion have the new, the requested cycle date in it, that they would come back if they're continuing to another cycle?
Well, the typical request would be to the next cycle, which would be starting in February.
Okay. Okay, perfect. Thank you.
All right, so we're continuing to the next cycle.
My restated motion then is the continuance to the next cycle, which would be February 2024.
Do you accept that revised?
Second.
Yeah, okay. All right, so we have a motion to continue to the next cycle now, and we have a second to that motion by Commissioner Simon. Are there any more questions or discussions from the commissioners who are voting? Seeing none, then all in favor say aye.
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 All, all not in favor, say nay.
Nay.
All right. One, two, one, two, three, four, five of you? Four to one.
Correct.
Is that right?
Yeah, there are only five who are voting on this motion.
Four ayes, one nay. Commissioner Lauk is the nay, because me and Commissioner Fernandez aren't allowed to vote. So the ayes have it. It's continued. We'll see you on the turn of the, turn of the year, next year.
Thank you.
You too. All right, on to our next item of business, 2B TACPA 23-19 Comprehensive Plan Map Amendment. Two folios located on the eastern side of Morris Bridge Road. And the presenter is Jennifer Malone.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners. Jennifer Malone with your Planning Commission Staff. This is 2319. As Chairman Joseph said, two folios are located on the eastern side of Morris Bridge Road. It is a privately initiated, small-scale amendment before you because it is about 28.36 acres. The request tonight is from Rural Estate 10 and environmentally sensitive areas to suburban mixed-use 3 and environmentally sensitive areas. So you might, may recall, this came before you for briefing last month, and that request was to suburban mixed-use 6. The applicant has amended the request within the, the deadline in the procedures manual to suburban mixed-use 3. So the request is in the new Tampa Planning District within flood zone A, E, and X. It is located east of the Easton Park neighborhood. So it's way up in the furthest northeastern corner of Hillsborough County and the city of Tampa. It's on the eastern side of Morris Bridge Road. It's a very rural area. This was annexed into the city in about 2007. So everything within the blue line is within the city jurisdictions. Everything outside of the blue line is within the county. And this is a portion of the subject site to the right along Morris Bridge Road. Morris Bridge Road's a two, a two-lane roadway. And then to the south of the site, there's some housing developments going up. This is the adopted future land use map. So as we can see, the subject site is Rural Estate 10. It's almost a neon green color and environmentally sensitive areas. The hills, the parcels directly to the east over here within this blue boundary, these are within Hillsborough County jurisdiction, and they're the agricultural future land use designation. So this future land use agricultural is one dwelling unit per 10 acres. That matches the one dwelling unit per 10-acre density that the subject site and the surrounding parcels have under the Rural Estate 10. Further south is natural preservation within unincorporated Hillsborough County. And then to the west of Morris Bridge Road is suburban mixed-use 3. And as we can see, the applicant has requested that suburban mixed-use 3 retaining the environmentally sensitive areas, matching what is across the street. This would greatly impact the, or increase the potential right now because there's only about 14 acres of Rural Estate 10 on the site. All the rest of it is environmentally sensitive areas. They could only get one dwelling unit potentially, about 40,000 square feet of non-residential uses. But this would increase up to 43 units, would also increase their amount of non-residential or residential to about 156,000 square feet. The suburban mixed-use 3 designation allows the applicant to utilize a floor area ratio for their dwelling units. So that's why it could be a little bit more than 43 units if they choose to use the, the FAR. The city of Tampa, who is here tonight to speak on this, has objected to the proposed amendment due to the lack of utilities and city services within the area and a lack of a similar uses along the east side of Morris Bridge Road. Some context for the request, it was annexed into the city in 2007, and the, the Planning Commission worked with the city and created a new future land use designation of Rural Estate 5 for the parcels that were coming in. This was due to the environmental constraints of the site, the rural development pattern, and the lack of available public facilities. This recommendation was sent off to the state. Then it was called the Department of Community Affairs. The Department of Community Affairs wrote back and said, we're objecting to the Rural Estate 5. That's too dense for this area. Everything on the eastern side of Morris Bridge Road is at the 10 dwelling units an acre in the unincorporated county. This site shouldn't, should match what the county has. So the Planning Commission revised, and it became adopted as Rural Estate 10. Again, that is one dwelling unit for 10 acres. The comprehensive plan encourages additional density and intensity consistent with that compact city form strategy. The comprehensive plan, you know, recognizes that there needs to be a place where we are, where people are going to move to and in housing for new residents, but it needs to be in the right places. So it needs to, the growing, the housing and services for the growing population should be within proximity to employment and transit. Those should be leveraged when we're planning for the growing population. So the site is not within proximity to transit, employment, or services. The Hillsborough County Planning Organization, Transportation Planning Organization states that there's no roadway capacity improvements, transportation projects, or transit services planned for this area, and the surrounding area is really primarily agricultural with no employment generators for several miles. The plan also speaks to the use of available public facilities. And per comments from the city of Tampa, there are no available public facilities for the site, and the growth strategy of the plan does encourage growth where there's capacity and availability to serve the proposed development. Finally, there is, there is a portion that's environmentally sensitive. There are environmental constraints on the site, and any future development of the site should be sensitive to those environmental constraints and minimize the disturbance of any wetlands on the site. So I just would end with, the plan balances the, the policy direction with, with the policy direction of planning for the future growth of the city with the availability of, of our services, of, of transportation improvements and employment. And the site just doesn't have any of that within, within its surrounding development pattern, and it is not comparable or compatible to the rural development pattern around it. So it is inconsistent with the plan, and before I step away, I just wanted to show, I do have the FEMA map printed out as well. I had similar tech issues that Emily had, so trying to print this, so I apologize, but it's zones A, E, and X. So I do have that available if any, if, if anybody would like to review it. And the city of Tampa is also here to address any questions about their comments. Thank you.
Is there any other presentation, or?
Do you want to make a presentation?
Good evening, Planning Commission. Evan Johnson, City Planning Department. First time making comments to you as a city of Tampa Planning staff member, so very excited to be here. Yeah, as we mentioned in our comments, we do object to the changes. We received comments from multiple departments, including our land development folks, who, due to the lack of consist, consistent densities and intensities on the east side of Morris Bridge, the environmental issues, and the lack of any utilities within the area. Currently, K-Bar and I believe it's Easton Park are both served from the west. There will be a water extension that makes it up to the entrance of K-Bar Ranch eventually, when they're ready for that service. But even at that point, that's about 1,700 linear feet, 1,700 to 2,000 linear feet from this development. Wastewater had the same concerns. Their nearest manhole is in the Easton Park near the entrance, but they couldn't speak to, there's a lot of questions as to what would happen if this land use was granted as far as densities and intensities that would be allowed and what impacts that may have. So they couldn't really speak to potential for capacity or anything like that at this time due to the unknowns of the issue. So those fed into the, the objection that city staff had. Thank you for your time. If you have any questions?
Thank you. All right. We had a couple people sign up in the public comment. First, I'll check online. We had one individual online, Andrew Robalino. Oh, you're here. Oh, the applicant, sorry. Go ahead.
Good evening. My name's David Wright. I'm the president of TSP Companies. I'm presenting this application on behalf of the property owner. The site is shown here in the pink, and yes, it is, does have a couple of future land use designations on it. Basically, the area of the site that we're looking at changing the future land use to is just the uplands here. We do have a wetland delineation, which I gave a copy to the secretary, and we also have a habitat assessment report, which basically confirmed that there's no sensitive, excuse me, no protected species on the site. And there is sensitive upland habitat, but it's all confined within the areas of the wetlands. So we're, we're looking to change this to SMU 3. As stated before, there, SMU 3 is on the other side of Morris Bridge Road. We don't feel like that the, the delineation of Morris Bridge Road should cut this off from the city's facilities. I mean, basically, they're directly across the street. It will be up to the property owner developer to bring those facilities to the site. So we're seeking to allow this to be considered for future development. Again, here, SMU 3, this is the property here. We're, we're seeking an extension of that. The K-Bar Ranch development is directly across the street. This is the approved zoning plan for K-Bar under the SMU 3 development standards, and we would seek the same. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, sir. All right. Now to the public comment. Back to online. Is Andrew Robalino on the line? Just to double check.
Andrew did not check in.
Nope. All right, so we will go to individuals in the room. And I have David Wright. That was you. All right. That looks like it. So I will turn it over to the Planning Commissioners, unless you had something you wanted to say during your response time. Nope. All right, I'll turn it over to our Planning Commissioners for comments. Commissioner Steven?
So I apologize, I'm new at this, but my question is, would it be up to the city to, you know, to cover the expense of the water and sewer connection, or would that be up to the developer?
There's a, it's up to the developer. There's a specific policy, actually, that says that, that they're required to connect, and the expense lies with the developer.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any, Commissioner Fernandez?
Staff, we see the flood map again. Want to take advantage of this? Having two properties. We, we've never gotten really to see these until tonight. I want to point out that that hatched area, not the light blue area, but the hatched area is an area that floods regularly. That's what that means in a FEMA flood map. And I'm sorry, I can't see it from here, but does that say, yeah, also a 15-year-old map that hasn't incorporated a lot of new developments, things like that. Thank you, Jennifer. But so, yeah, those hatched areas, when I brought them up in the past, is, it is going to flood, and it's probably going to go beyond that point. So we just got to keep that in mind, where even if there's uplands right adjacent to it, we don't have the exact elevations now, but that should be a red flag when we see that hatched area. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Steven? Nope, yep.
Can I address his comment, actually?
Yeah, yeah.
So I think, it's my understanding at least, that you're not allowed to build in a floodway for, per FEMA, or is that not, is that not the case anymore?
I wish it was.
Okay.
Commissioner Lauk?
I think we get a lot of base about flood plains, flood and all that, but at the end of the day, the developer's going to have restrictions as it goes to the zoning process and the permitting process, and there's going to be mitigation tactics. So the question before us, is this the right long-term land use plan for it? And I question the city's recommendation for denial when the developer is, it's incumbent upon the developer to extend those facilities to the property. We have a Publix that's 1.8 miles away. This is Morris Bridge Road. You have surrounding zoning that's along the same lines. Conversely, I do think it's a pretty intense use. It's a pretty intense jump, but I don't think it's a open and shut case in this particular instance with what the developer's asking for. I think while the staff report's really, really good, I think perhaps maybe when we can zoom out and see some of the concurrent zoning, some of the concurrent long-term plans, when we look down and we see that very dense commercial area... plans, when we look down and we see that very dense commercial area with the Publix sitting there and the residential property, there are one right across the street with that development that's already there, I think it adds context to where this is. So if I just look at the staff report and I look at the aerials and I look at what's written in there, it would seem that I'm in the middle of horse ranches. But if I zoom out just ever so much, I see the Publix and I see how much development that we have. So again, I think the intent, the, the message for staff is give us a little bit, zoom out if you would, moving forward, a little more context to some of these. I do think it's a pretty intense use relative to the developments that are there however. So a little, little bit of a, what do they call that, a crap sandwich, some good, some bad.
Thank you Commissioner Lauk. I too was a bit surprised. I, I thought it was pretty cut and dry and then to come in here and hear the things I've heard, I've heard a lot of shocking things tonight, although I haven't spoken on them. It seems that, yeah, like Commissioner Lauk just points to, it's incumbent on the developer to extend all these lines that everyone just spoke all this, you know, grow, well, we don't have lines and it's this far away and however many lineal feet, well, that's incumbent on the developer to deal with, so why, you know, why is that the grounds? It seems kind of weird to me. And whenever I get weird stuff like that, it automatically makes me think someone's being disingenuous. So it, it definitely gave me pause on this one. I don't know that I'm, you know, of an ilk to go against staff just yet, but I'm, I'm definitely like Commissioner Lauk, you know, it, it's, it's not as cut and dry as it seemed when I first came in here for sure.
So while the initial upfront costs of any lines are borne by the developer, certainly it would be the city's responsibility then to maintain and service that area going forward. So I don't think it is, when, when I've seen decisions about extending lines particularly into a, what is an otherwise rural area, there are additional expenses in having to upkeep that line just for a certain number of properties. I, I don't know exactly the city's concern, but that, that's been more what I've seen in the unincorporated area in terms of issues with extensions of lines into what are otherwise areas that are not going to be served. I would also just point out that the areas that are remaining and surrounding this to the north and the east in the unincorporated area are in the rural service area and have a land use category of the agricultural, agricultural one unit per 10 acres, which is even lower than what is typically found in most parts of the rural area. A lot of that's because of the sensitivity to the environmental areas in that surrounding area. And so I would say that staff's recommendation is largely based on the compatibility with that eastern side of Morris Bridge Road.
You won me back. You won me back. Commissioner Stephen?
Sorry, one of my last questions, I think. So this acreage is listed at 28.36 acres, but it says here that it's a maximum of 43 dwelling units or three per gross acre. Am I messing up that math a little bit because it seems to me that that would be 1.5 dwelling units per acre? Or is that exclusive of the?
Yes.
The environmentally sensitive areas?
Yeah, there's about 14.36 acres that, that, that's Rural Estate 10 and the rest is environmentally sensitive, so we took that out of the equation. They would note that there is in the plan a, a 25% calculation if, or David might have to help me on this, but there's an environmentally sensitive areas credit. So when they, but that would be down the line at zoning, so they may have more density. There's a, there's a calculation in the plan that, that permits.
Like the transfer development rights from the environment?
Yes, yes. That's essentially what it is. Yes, there's, there's a formula is what I'm trying to say. So there's a statement about that.
So it could be more units or less units?
It could be, and then, but there's also the FAR too. So the floor area ratio, they can, they can utilize that in the SMU 3 category. So it could definitely be more than 43 units if they choose to use the FAR. And then we have the, the environmentally sensitive areas credit as well, which I made a.
Was that, that was my question, was that included in the 43?
No.
Correct, no.
I did not do that calculation at this time because it is kind of evaluated at the time of zoning.
Commissioner Fernandez?
This is why we need updated flood maps, so it's just handed a site plan of the area and some of the area in the flood zone is only about 10 inches lower than the highlands. So yeah, it's not like we're up on a huge hill here. In fact, there are other parts of the property that go back down another foot. So where the existing structure is, is about a foot above the flood zone at the moment.
Thank you. Commissioner Kress?
Yeah, I was just going to make my opinion known that I would be confirming staff's recommendation of inconsistency based on compatible uses. I also feel like, to, to jump to the east side of the road, it could be just one of those dominos that falls and then it's the next parcel, the next parcel, and then all of a sudden we have no agricultural rural, environmentally sensitive land left. So that's where I sit.
Thank you Commissioner Kress. Any more discussions, comments, railings from the commissioners? No? All right, going once, going twice, and I will go ahead and close the public comment on this item and open it up to motions. Commissioner Fernandez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move to find the city of Tampa CPA 23-19 from Rural Estate 10 and environmental sensitive areas to suburban mixed-use 3 and environmental sensitive areas, inconsistent with the Tampa Comprehensive Plan and forward this recommendation to Tampa City Council.
Secondhand motion.
All right, we have a motion of inconsistency finding by Commissioner Fernandez, a second to that motion by Commissioner Bowden. Are there any questions or discussion items from the commissioners? Clarifications? No? And I'll go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those who oppose signify by saying nay.
Nay.
All right. One nay and the rest of us are ayes. I don't know what our numbers are right now. Six to one, six to one. It passes. Inconsistent, all right. And that was our last agenda item of business, so with that, meeting is adjourned. Good night, everyone.